Trees or in uprooted roots, roots of uprooted trees. Some of them drill a hole into a live tree like a piliadid woodpecker. Others nest in cavities that have been opened up by other birds. So there's a surprising number of species that do this, especially interior forest birds, which are going down in the country, in the northeast especially, due to fragmentation of the property. The more edge you build, the more chances for predators to get in. So if you cut it up, like if you put luggy roads in of any kind, anything wide where the property is cut up, the more edge you have, the more predation you have, and these birds just will not nest in the areas. Some of these birds are going down in the country, some are endangered even in Connecticut. So I don't know if I should read you off a list. I could provide you a list for the record if you'd like.
If you'd like to do that, you can give it to Darlene.
That would save you time.
And that would save the...
Is that okay? I'm also concerned about animals such as things that nest in cavities, one of which is a flying squirrel. They nested woodpecker cavities. There's all the other animals you... I'm sure the New England Forestry Foundation would like to preserve animal diversity in the forest, and there are a lot of species like martens, mink, whatever, and all the amphibians that should be also maintained for diversity. So these are my concerns, and I'm putting them on the table for you to consider in your consideration of this proposition.
Okay, sir. We can't respond to your questions during public comment, but when they make their presentation, that's some question that we could ask them.
I'd like to put them in the record. I have also a paper here about this.
Okay. Just hand that to Darlene, and it'll become part of the record.
So that's all I have for now.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the board? Yes, sir. Please come up and give us your name.
My name's Tom Harman. I'm from Sterling, but I own eighteen and a half acres on Gurley Brook, where they're talking Gurley Brook. I own where it goes underneath the highway, back maybe twenty-five hundred feet or more on that brook. And it's not really wetlands there. I've got it for thirty-five, forty years, and it's never flooded once. And somebody said something to me today. I called the first selectmen. I guess he's not here right now. And he said, "Well, we don't have any money. You can donate it." I just want you to know, I'm not going to donate it. I've been paying taxes on it for forty years. Okay?
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to address the board? Joan.
For the record, Joan Kwazniewski-Banksen. I sit on the planning commission and also am secretary of the East Lime and Nyanac Conservation Land Trust. I came across some papers my dad had, and he sat on the conservation committee. One of the goals was to acquire land, open space, and bike trails and walking trails on Route 161. That was dated nineteen ninety-nine. So I would just like to have the vision the conservation committee had in nineteen ninety-nine. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Anyone else wishing to comment under delegations? Seeing none, we'll move into the housekeeping part before we move on to the business items. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of May 6, 2015?
I've moved to approve the minutes of the continued public hearing of May 6, 2015 as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, corrections? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
The next one is the continued public hearing. Right now you're doing the special. Oh, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Skip one.
She just made the motion.
Yeah. We'll swap them around, Darlene.
Okay.
Too many minutes for special meetings. Okay. Are we done with that one?
Yes.
I'll go back to 1D1. Move to approve the minutes of the special meeting of May 6, 2015 as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or corrections? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Motion passed this. And now the approval of minutes of the May 6, 2015 meeting.
Move to approve the minutes of the meeting of May 6, 2015 as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any corrections or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Carried unanimously. Okay. Onto the consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar for the meeting of May 2015 in the amount of
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Moving on, the first action of business is the public, is the, regarding the public hearing, the amendment to regulate the use of golf carts on Crescent Beach. Anyone like to open a discussion on that?
I would.
Yes.
During our previous discussion and in passing the amendment, we approved the use of golf carts based on, in Crescent Beach as part of the other beach communities, and we heard comment on that from numerous sources. So we've already approved the use of those. It seems to me that tonight's discussion centered around disagreements within the Crescent Beach community, the decision of the Board of Governors, and that is not something that's part of our domain. So my suggestion is going to be that we table this this evening and give those people who have complaints within their own organization an opportunity to discuss those. I don't know what percentage of the voters had the, in the Crescent Beach Association, had the opportunity to vote on this, but it seems to be, there seems to be some dissension. And I think that, that's, as I said, that's not really within our domain. We've heard from a number of people who would like to have the golf carts be used, and that's already the regulation. So I really, that's my suggestion, that we table this and put it on the next agenda, and the Board of Governors can come back to us with a report that they have indicated, that they've assessed or given all of their members an opportunity to comment and to have input, and then come back to us with what the decision is.
Mr. First Select, Mr. Deputy First Select, I believe the town attorney would like to make a comment relating to this, please.
Thank you.
If I may, I would just like to point out to the Board of Selectmen that according to paragraph three of the regulation, the registration shall expire on May 31 of each calendar year. So the police department is now issuing permits that will take effect on June 1 and go till May 31 of 2016.
Okay, so the, that... Bing, go ahead, Rob.
Since this is the last meeting in May.
Yeah, well...
And...
Yeah, go ahead, Holly.
Do you want... I just have a question as to the way this was drawn up. In the regulations, how do we, how do we describe how a community opts out? Do we state that the duly authorized organization, be it the Board of Governors, has, at their discretion, can opt out? Because if that's how it's stated, it occurs to me that the duly elected Board of Governors of Crescent Beach has made this decision, and if they then come to us and say, "We want to be removed," I don't see it's within our discretion to say, "Well, we're not going to pay attention to what you said," despite what it says in the reg. So I would like some clarification on that, please, Tracy.
Certainly. According to the state statute, it's the local traffic authority of any town or city that has the right to regulate its roadways. And according to East Lime's town charter, that's the Board of Selectmen. The regulation itself does not address opting out, although I should point out that this regulation was adopted at the Board of Selectmen meeting on April 23, 2014. There had been a public hearing before that, and the effective date last year was May 12 of 2014.
So how did the ability of communities to opt out from this regulation come about?
It's my understanding, and from the meetings that I attended, certain communities came and expressed their desire to opt out or sent letters to the first selectmen.
So it is entirely within our discretion to take that opt out or not?
It is.
Okay. Thank you.
As the local traffic authority.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Wilson?
Yeah. That's where I was going to go, is I believe it is our, at our discretion to either have approved it as a viable option for a vehicle or not. And we did that with, well, in my case, six years of exhausting. I know more about golf carts than I ever wanted to know. But here's my deal on this. They're electric. I don't think they're harming the ozone. We've done all of that stuff. People have spent, and I really can't say how many there are, but I know that people have spent a decent amount of money on carts. The ones that can do it did it for a reason, and I believe it wasn't willy-nilly that you go spend three or four grand on a cart and just have people running off with it. I haven't seen that. We've had updates periodically through the police department. The registration went phenomenally well. The people that wanted them came down, did all, did everything, jumped through all the hoops that we did, the signage, the license plates, the insurance, all of the bells and whistles they needed on the carts. Everybody did that. I haven't heard anything that's been a negative. Quite frankly, a lot of the beach people that I know that have them have been phenomenally pleased with the outcome. The parking part of it, I'm a little confused at. In reading all of the issues with Crescent Beach and their agendas and everything, seems to me they don't know anything about the handicap parking either because it's been, it's on every agenda and it's being looked into, but not much has gone on with it. And that was at, that was at C. Handicap Parking, Terry Cohen and Heather Parsons continuing to review this issue. I think Mr. Mingo hit on, hit on a part of that, that this, what it was designed for was to get people to be able to get to some of these locations within beach communities that made sense for handicap and folks that needed help. And Mr. Beers was correct. You know, he's taxiing people back and forth. Some people that get down there, rent homes, don't realize it's a walk to the beach. It's longer than you might think. And I do believe there's, while there might not be parking, as much parking down at the stand area on that main beach, but certainly there's a tremendous amount of parking on the lower beach that I see. And probably not all of the people parking there are Crescent Beach people, to be honest with you. So maybe that should be looked into more if there really is some kind of parking. And I went down today and really looked around, and I don't see any handicap parking designated for anything in different areas. So from my perspective, without a tremendous amount of negativity through either the police department that has come, that has come to us on any monthly reports of all the activity that they do, I, I kind of feel like it is a Crescent Beach Association issue in that they should give, because we're coming into this season of everybody's home, or everybody's down for the summer, that maybe you ought to have a real community discussion about this and get those people that have carts and have, you know, a vested interest in that to properly notify, like, it's hard to get a hold of everybody, and we know that. So that's, that's my take on it, and I would like to see it revisited from our, I want to make a decision, and I don't want to take it away from someone that actually needs it and that went out and spent good money on doing it.
As I said, I was not on this commission during this vote last year, but I do have some concerns that seemed like there was due process, and there were some communities that did opt out. This was one that obviously was not opted out. But I do have concern with people, we pass an ordinance, and then we change it a year later, and people do make investments in things, and some of it's for health, some of it's for other reasons. I do have a concern for that, and I would like to ask if we were to change this ordinance and opt them out, what happens to the people that already have them? Are they now not allowed to operate them?
That's correct.
Okay. So I concur with you. That is, that is a concern of mine. I don't like passing laws and then changing them. It does affect people. I do agree, kind of with you two, and I do agree with the autonomy, you know, if that's what Crescent Beach wants. However, this was passed last year. There have, has there been any safety issues or any? I can understand if there was some accidents or anything. I have not heard any evidence of that.
I did talk to Sergeant Blanchett, the resident trooper supervisor, as well as Sergeant San Juan, the town administrative sergeant, and they said they didn't have any problems at all last year with the golf carts.
Okay.
That was from them. It doesn't mean there weren't problems, it's just that they were not made aware of any. You know, because they don't always...
There were no, okay.
No.
Official complaints.
Yes.
But I haven't heard any evidence today that there have been issues, just more that they could be issues.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, nothing came across on, you know, when we get our monthly, who did what and what's going on with all of that. I mean, there were never any, and we asked for that, too, that if there was really big issues, then we should know about it because we should be dealing with it. And that never materialized, so. I don't know.
Well, I do know last year when we did talk about this, we did say that we would provide the communities the opportunity to opt out if they wished to. The one concern here, too, is about if Roseanne brought up, we could always ask them to go back and discuss it more with their membership. We're getting close to the time when they'd have to re-register, though. I'm sure that's something that we could probably work out for just a month or something like that so we could come back and visit this, so that we don't make someone pay for a whole year and then come back and, oops, sorry. And then it gets to be difficult to try and refund them eleven months' worth of whatever. But it did seem like I've heard from the board consensus that maybe we'd like to revisit this after it's been vetted again at the beach level. Is that correct?
That's what I'd like to see.
Okay.
My concern is we were willing to, you know, accept the duly elected authorities of the other beaches when they decided to opt out, and that we're denying this to Crescent Beach. I think it's, it's a, it's not a level playing field. We either take their word for it, that they have gone through, that done their due diligence, and I have great sympathy for the people who have the golf carts, but we set up a protocol, and it seems to me we should follow it fairly for each beach.
Okay.
So I'm happy to move, you know, the motion. If the vote, if it fails, so be it, but I would like to...
All right. The only, Holly, I'm not disagreeing with you whatsoever. What my sticking point is, is that we had a whole year. People did make investments. Pine Grove was here. They had a letter that was here before it even, we even made up, we even voted on it, that they were not, they were not going to go forward with it. So I mean, some of that was on board early, and we kind of knew that. So, and others were enthusiastic about, you know, say, New Black Point. I mean, they championed this from the get-go. So I don't see any downside to a short-term extension of this until they come back to us with a, with a clear consensus of the Crescent Beach community.
So I suppose, like, what would satisfy this board? That the Crescent Beach governors come back and say they have 700 members and 698 voted not to have golf... I mean, what's our...
Well, I think...
We postpone it, and the governors come back and say, "Yeah, we had the meeting. We still have..." I think the logistical issues that Tracy pointed out in terms of the permitting and the year, anyway, I've made myself clear. As I say, I'm happy to move this, and if it goes down, then that's fine, but I feel it's important to at least address this and...
Okay. If you'd like, you have a motion.
If we take no action this evening, there's no need for a motion. We have it in the ordinance, ordinance that they're allowed. So there's no, what would the motion be?
Okay. So we'll just...
Well, it's up to, if someone...
Take no action?
Well, if we take no action, it obviously means the golf carts are still permissible. They could come back at a later time, the board directors come back and say they've had another meeting, and as Roseanne pointed out, that they are still overwhelmingly in favor of having them, not having them, or it was a closed vote or something like that. That could always come back for a second one.
But then...
We could always do that.
But then one presumes, because people had paid for their registrations, they would be able to use them through the summer, and then it would not be permitted after the summer. I'm just not clear of the logistics, how this would work.
Well, one thing I was thinking of, here again, judging from what we heard from the directors, that they tried to convey this last year, and for some reason it didn't get to the board, that they wanted to opt out early on, and now they use them for the year. Now it's back to where there are probably some people who aren't here during the winter and don't have the opportunity to participate or get their, you know, input in. Now they do. We could always say, we haven't heard any problems from safety that we know of. Not to say there hasn't been, but we haven't heard of any. We could always say, we could let it do it one more year, and if after this year they still feel that way, come back to us as a whole and say, "No, the board directors are still unhappy with it, and this way they've had plenty of time to convey, well in advance of the registrations," then we can look at it again.
Yeah, and I believe they have an annual meeting that I guess is probably, probably well-attended.
Do you have something to add, Tracy?
Just to answer your question, Mrs. Cheeseman, you do have the option of moving that the proposed amendment be adopted. That's what's before you tonight.
Yes. Okay.
So would anyone like to make a...
Can I ask one more question?
Certainly.
Is there any way that, just so I know all our options here, that ordinance could be amended to grandfather people that already had them in?
It's important to note that this is not an ordinance. This is a regulation. So different rules apply to regulations because the Board of Selectmen is the traffic authority. It can impose these regulations. So is your question, can you put into the regulation that people who have already purchased golf carts could operate them?
People that have been issued permits prior to a certain date are grandfathered in.
Prior to May 31 last year?
Whenever, if we were to pass something, whenever it passed.
Yes, you could change the proposed regulation that is before you now to grandfather people.
Okay.
So they would, there would be no new permits issued in Crescent Beach, but people who had valid permits last year and had purchased golf carts would be able to?
They would have to go through the same application process that they did last year. Yes.
That would be something above and beyond what we have before us. All right? That would have to be another...
Correct. So I would have to take a moment to...
Well, that's just it. Would that, that's a good point. Would that require another public hearing? Because...
I think it would.
My honest opinion is it probably would because you're changing a rule, and people have a right to be heard on that.
Yes.
It's a question of notice.
Question of notice.
This was published in, well, the entire regulation wasn't put in the paper, but the notice that tonight was the hearing...
Right.
On this regulation has been in the paper, has been in the clerk's office and on the website for people to look at.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm really not comfortable with that either. Either you have them or you don't. Some people who had enough money to buy them and wanted to buy them, bought them. Maybe somebody's been saving for a year to buy one and doesn't have it. I just think that that sets up an unfair system. Either, either they're allowed or they're not.
Okay, I think we've had discussion. Is there any motion at all that anyone would like to make regarding the amendment for the regulation?
One last question, then we can move on.
Sure.
So if we take no action tonight, we could, because there's been a public hearing, we could take it up if the Board of Governors came back and said, "We've canvassed everyone. It's overwhelming."
Your problem in that case would be is that people have already been issued carts, that golf cart registrations that are good for another year.
They'd be able to run them through the year. Okay.
Yes.
That's why I, my suggestion, let's give it another year, then you have another opportunity to let it go a whole year. You don't get into any problems with the registration. Everybody's set for the year, and if the board of directors still feels convinced that it needs to be addressed, they can do it at their annual meeting, and we can address it well before next season comes in. That's what I would feel comfortable doing at this point in time.
Yeah, you know, I don't think this is any different than the stop sign that comes to us that has been researched, and I bring to you North Bribrook Road and Atwood, Atwood Drive, that we did exhaustively for two years with every engineer and their brother, wanted yields, wanted all of these different things, stopping short of a traffic light, and we ended up against everyone's, as the traffic authority, putting a stop sign there against the rules of the road, saying that there shouldn't have been a stop sign. We've had no other problems since then. It took a little time to get it done, but we did what we thought was the right thing. So I, I think tabling this, this evening is, as the authority, in going forward and taking this up another, in another year, and giving all of the beach communities a chance to come to us with any complaints or issues regarding golf carts, which we said initially we would do, we would do a review. And I would think a two-year review would be, would be sufficient.
Okay. Is there any motion to be made?
I tabled the motion.
Okay. Tabling, motion, is there a second? And there is no discussion on tabling of a motion?
Correct.
And it has to be, in this case, a four-to-one vote to table?
It doesn't take a vote to table.
I thought it took a vote to second and then a vote.
I don't believe so. But we've, we've got expert counsel here on parliamentary procedure.
Voting to table. It takes a vote, and you can't discuss, or there's no discussion on a vote to table, but I thought it had to be by a two-thirds majority to table.
I think it's a, it's a non-debatable motion. I know that. I don't know if it requires a supermajority. I don't, I don't think it does.
Okay. There's been a motion to table by, Rob, you made it.
Yeah.
Roseanne, you seconded it, and so we'll table it and revisit it again next year. Thank you for all your comments, both from those of for and against, and we heard you, and please keep us advised of how things are going. Thank you.
What's your list, please? Any vote on that table?
No, not because according to the town council, it's not necessary. Vote in a second, non-discussion, it's table.
I believe you said, didn't...
Oh, a vote, okay. All those in favor of tabling? Thank you, sir. The motion to table, all those in favor, see if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, four-to-one, so it's a supermajority anyway. I'll put your coffee on that one.
You know, I don't drink coffee.
Moving on, the next thing is an additional expenditure from the Parahouse account in the amount of $300. At the May Committee on Aging meeting, the board approved an additional expenditure from the account. We had approved 500 last month, and apparently they needed a few hundred dollars more. This is not money that's coming from the town's budget or anything like that. This is from an account that they have access to, and it's to add some staging in the community center in support of the senior center's drama group. So we have the information in front of you. Is there a motion to approve?
I've moved to approve an additional expenditure of $300 from the N. Parahouse account to fully cover cost of stage additions.
So second?
Second.
Second, that moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Carried unanimously. Now moving on, the continuing discussion, possible action on Newland Forest Refoundation regarding the purchase of the property of Goldfinch Terrace and Open Space. We have Whitney and Mr. Harney here to talk to us. Do you have an opening comment or...
Yes.
Because I'm sure we have lots of questions.
It's nice to be back here again. Thank you for...
Thank you.
...the opportunity to speak one more time on this proposal. I believe that Darlene distributed a brief proposal, written proposal, that I hope you have before you, and I'm happy to read that into the record. To the Board of Selectmen, East Lime, Connecticut. The date is May 18, the time I wrote this. Subject, Nyanic River Headwaters Land Subject, Niannic River Headwaters Land Conservation Project Proposal. New England Forestry Foundation proposes to purchase the approximately 166-acre parcel of land located off Goldfinch Terrace and owned by KSK Associates LLC. The purchase would involve utilizing $500,000 granted by the State of Connecticut, which requires matching, $350,000 from the town of East Lime, and additional funds that New England Forestry Foundation would be responsible for raising. The land would be protected permanently by a conservation easement held jointly by Connecticut DEEP and the town. The conservation easement would include a permanent trail easement and public access to the property. New England Forestry Foundation would own the property and would manage it for water supply protection, wildlife habitat, public recreation, and sustainably grown, green-certified forest products. The town of East Lime would have no management responsibilities for the Niannic River Headwaters parcel after acquisition. It is critical for the Board of Selectmen to vote in favor of advancing this proposal to the Finance Committee at its May 20 meeting, that means at your meeting tonight, in order to avoid the reallocation or termination of the state grant. Purchase price, $1,225,000. Sources of revenue are $500,000 from the state, a proposed $350,000 from the town, and $375,000 from a bargain sale and fundraising by New England Forestry Foundation. And I suggest two different options for town funding. This is after talking with several people here in the town. Either a special appropriation from an existing account, which is Open Space Fund 59, or bonding at approximately 2.5% through a 20-year bond to be amortized over those 20 years, which would mean an expense to the median, median homeowner here in East Lime of $173 a year for 20 years.
A dollar seventy-three dollars.
One dollar seventy-three cents.
Yeah.
I should, I read better with my glasses on. Dollar seventy-three. Mr. Harney, do you have some additional points to add, or?
Well, I got some maps.
Okay. Unfortunately, when we are, there's technical problems. People at home can't watch, see what we're seeing now, we're looking at it here. Suppose if you're home watching or listening, you could go to Google Maps possibly, or?
Yeah.
You done, sir?
I guess I'll remark that this is a proposal that's been before you, the Board of Selectmen, for quite some time. It started with a request from the board to landowners of important parcels that were, that were brought up during a planning process here in town, and KSK Associates responded to that with an offer to work with the town to protect the parcel, and that's, letters went out in 2012, I believe. So, it's. 2010. So, it's been a while. The offer's been before you for a number of years.